Start off with roll call to my left.
Troy Tabor, Councilmember.
Ben Lawrence, Mayor.
Clark, C.R. Nelson, Councilmember.
Greg Schneider, Councilmember.
Mike Warrington, Councilmember.
Mike Keller, Police Chief.
Donna Davis, Chief Financial Officer.
Chad Russell, Fire Chief.
Jennifer McCosland, Assistant City Administrator.
J.T. Klaus, City Attorney.
Les Mangus, Director Public Works.
Susan Renner, City Clerk.
Mark Deter, City Administrator.
Caroline Hale, Councilmember.
All right, move on to item number three, which is the invocation. My understanding, we don't have a pastor here this evening, but anyone care to lead it?
Sure. Thank you, Troy. My pleasure. Jive of God, thank you for allowing us to work in your community to be elected officials that listen to and do the will of the people here, and I pray that you're in our hearts and our minds today as we talk and we think and we move with this community and we do it in the right way. Please bid with those always that are less fortunate than us to help them to find food, shelter, and love today. Jesus Christ name, amen.
Stand with us for the pledge of allegiance. Counsel, before we proceed with this, I'd like to welcome everybody to William Conklin. He's with Troop 533, and he's here for his communications badge tonight, and I've asked him to help us lead the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
William, have you have a city event over pin yet?
Yeah.
All right, we will move on to item number five, which is the public forum. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the council? Nobody? All right, we will move on to item number six, which is the acceptance of the agenda. Am I to see anything additional this evening?
No, sir. I think we just-
Of the executive session.
Right, right, but that was on there, you just changed the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second. By C.R., second by Mike, to accept the agenda as presented. Further discussion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On to item number seven, which is the consent agenda. It's items 7.1 through 7.8. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. A motion by Caroline, and second by Troy, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Further discussion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, we have a temporary zoning request before us this evening, is that correct?
Yes, once again, Mr. Marietta has applied for a temporary use permit to operate a pumpkin patch in September through the first of November at the corner of U.S. 54 and 159th Street. The request is essentially a duplicate of what was requested last year around this same time. Staff has no problem with the way that the operation has happened over the past year, and we'd like to note that we've had great cooperation with the owner in getting all of the equipment and materials cleaned up after each of his temporary uses.
Your pleasure.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the applicant's request to operate a pumpkin patch at 1600 West U.S. 54 from September 21 through November 3, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday, and 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Friday to Sunday.
Second. All right, a motion by C.R., and second by Greg, to approve the temporary zoning as requested. Further discussion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On to item number nine, the water and sanitary sewer improvement bids on Flint Hills Phase Six. Evening, Mr. Anderson.
Mayor and Council, Steve Anderson, City Engineer. We've opened bids on the culmination water and sewer improvement project for Flint Hills National Sixth Phase. It's in the northeast corner of that section. This is a standard subdivision project, standard bid documents, and Noah construction company out of Goddard was the low bidder, $482,000 and change. Noah's worked here for a number of years, perhaps three decades even, so we're recommending that the bids, the bid be accepted and the mayor be authorized to sign as noted in the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the low bid from Noah Construction Company, Inc. of Goddard, Kansas for water line and sanitary sewer extensions in Flint Hills National Sixth Phase, and not to exceed an amount of $482,146 and no sense, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Second. Motion by Greg, and a second by C.R., to accept the low bid from Noah, the amount of $482,146 for water and sanitary sewer extensions in Flint Hills National Phase Six. Further discussion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 10, USD 385 Metal Arc Edition. We have some water improvement bids.
This morning at 10:00 a.m., we also opened bids on the water line project for the USD 385 Metal Arc Edition project to serve the Metal Arc Elementary School. We had five bids. One of the bidders was disqualified because he didn't have the pre-qualification from the Department of Transportation. The second lowest bid was from McCullough Excavation, $85,975, and we would recommend that the governing body accept the bid from McCullough Excavation.
Mr. Mayor?
Go on.
Make a motion to accept the lowest qualified bid from McCullough Excavation, Inc., in the amount of $85,975, rejecting all other bids, including bidders not in compliance with Resolution 1406, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract for the USD 385 Metal Arc Edition Water Improvements.
Second.
All right, motion by Greg, and a second by Caroline, to approve the low bid from McCullough, amount of $85,975. And I believe you said to reject all other bids pursuant to our ordinance?
That's correct. I'm Troy.
What did I say?
Greg.
My bad.
It's okay.
Troy made the motion. Caroline made the second. Further discussion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm going to step down for item number 11.
Item number 11 is the sanitary sewer improvement bids on Terradyne Third Edition to the city of Andover. Les, you want to tell us what's going on?
This morning, we also received one bid on sanitary sewer extension for the Terradyne Third Edition. The bid was dramatically higher than the engineer's estimates, so we're recommending to you that the bid be rejected and you authorize the petitioner to negotiate a contract for the work.
Okay. Any questions? Motions?
Mr. Mayor, in light of, or Mr. President, in light of a substantial difference between the bid and the engineer's estimate as represented by the petitioned amount, I, Greg Schneider, move the city reject all bids and allow the developer-owner time to see if they can negotiate a more favorable bid to construct the sewer project all in accordance with the city standards and required specifications.
We have a motion by Greg, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Caroline, to turn down all the bids and allow the developer-owner time to negotiate a more favorable bid for the sanitary sewer project.
One question, Mr. President.
Yeah.
So really only one company put in a bid on this? Is that correct?
Yes, the-
Is that correct?
No, it's not. The underground construction business is very tight right now. There's a lot of work out there, and this project is not the ordinary run-of-the-mill subdivision out in Greenfield. It's a little complicated by a golf course and existing development.
Mr. President?
That was an excellent question.
With this type of projects, is it required that you use a, like a company, or is there something that you, can you do part of it yourself, or, I don't know, have people that you know come out? I know they can't put in the sewer line per se and connect that piece of-
This is a public sewer, so it has to be done by qualified contractors.
Okay. So I can't just bring a shovel out there?
No, you can't run over to the rental store and rent an excavator and operate one for the first time in your life.
Further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, we'll move on to item number 12. This is the 159th Street Project Central to U.S. 54, and we have agreement with KDOT in front of us.
This is the typical agreement with the DOT that establishes that relationship for the project, that the DOT will pay 80% of the construction cost and the construction engineering, and the city is responsible for 20%, and the preliminary engineering right-of-way acquisition and utility relocations. It's a boilerplate agreement that we have approved many times for many KDOT projects over the years.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the KDOT city-state agreement for 159th Street Improvement, the project Central Avenue to U.S. 54 as presented.
Second. It's at you, Mike.
Yes.
Motion by C.R., and second by Mike, to approve the KDOT agreement as presented. Further discussion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, Yorktown Parkway.
Mr. Mayor, the council, excuse me, the school board approved the petition for Yorktown Parkway, Douglas to Central last night. As you recall, this project has a long history, starting with the platting of the Andover Central Campus and an agreement signed between the school district, the city, and the county that this road would be installed at the point that development required it. We think we're to that point now. I think the council all realizes, we went through a lot of negotiations with the school district on this and several other issues related to the bond. Their portion of this will be 25%, our portion will be 75%. We currently have a estimate of $4.2 million on that road. We're hoping to do better than that, obviously, with our negotiations, but that's the current estimate. That includes financing costs and that type of thing. But we do have to bond this portion of it. The city can pay a little cash with our sales tax to pay down our portion, but the school district would like an assessment over 20 years for this project. We think we have come to mutual agreement on almost everything related to this project, including the grading, the drainage, the wetlands that were affected, and a lot of their stuff. So this has been a long time in the making. We have a resolution of advisability that will actually authorize the project, authorize this to issue bonds, and then the work ordinance will obviously allow the work on the project, and I'm sure Les can update you on when we think we'll be getting well into this in terms of the actual work of this.
Questions? So we'll take these one at a time, then. We'll deal with the paving petition first.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the petition for USD 385 for the purpose of paving improvements for Yorktown Parkway between Douglas and Central Avenue.
Second.
Motion by Greg, and second by Caroline, to approve the paving petition as presented. Further discussion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13.2 is the resolution of advisability.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the resolution of advisability relating to paving improvements for Yorktown Parkway between Douglas and Central Avenue, and further authorize a method of assessment for such benefit district financing set improvements.
Second. Motion by Greg, and second by C.R., to approve the resolution of advisability as presented. Further discussion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13.3 is the aforementioned work ordinance, authorizing the paving improvements.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance authorizing paving improvements related to the Yorktown Parkway project from Douglas to Central Avenue.
Second. Motion by Greg, and second by Troy, to approve the work ordinance as presented. Further discussion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14, request for proposal on the Andover Republic Golf Course.
Mr. Mayor, DJ Gearing, our intern, who's been doing the majority of the work around here lately, no, I'm just kidding, that was the staff, but he's been doing a lot of work lately, prepared this RFP for golf course operators. He knows a lot of the background of how we put this together and who we're going to solicit and that type of thing, so I thought I'd have him give you a brief presentation on the RFP itself.
Yeah, so what we have is an RFP for the operation of Andover Municipal Golf Course, based on one that the city of Russell did a couple of years ago, with bids accepted from August 14 through September 30, with the hope of entering into a contract by November 15 of this year, with management taking over at the beginning of January of next year. We are going to post the RFP on the website. We also have a list of 22 or 23 entities that we are going to send the RFP to. That includes 13 regional and national golf course operators. If you have any questions, I can answer those.
I don't have any questions for him, but I have a question, well, I'll ask after we vote, or during the vote process.
Is that a motion to approve?
Yep.
All right. Second. Motion by Troy, and second by C.R., to approve the request for proposal as presented. Further discussion.
Mr. Mayor? I know I talked about an idea of moving this from being a golf course to just a public park, and I think several of us have talked about it before. I think it's a numbers question, too, and I never put down the numbers on exactly how much we're spending on, like, this type of a contract, but if the amount is equal or less for us to maintain it, and I don't know that would be, by all means, I would much rather not continue with a golf course there based on the number of people that actually use it and how many problems we've had with it, I'd rather see if it's a possibility for us to move it to being a public park.
Well, touché. We've had that discussion before, and we've had a lot of issues with finding qualified operators to run it. This last group, they did it for almost five years, and they did a fantastic job at it. They weren't making any money. I don't expect people to work for free, but I wouldn't expect the city to subsidize a golf course either. You see Wichita going through this process, closing them down, because most golf courses are money losers. Everybody knows that. The question I have is, I think if we can get somebody to run it, that wants to run it and can do a decent job, we ought to leave it, because it's not going to cost us anything. If a, if an operator comes back and says, okay, well, we'll run it, we'll operate it, but we need X, Y, and Z from the city, it's a different question.
Yeah.
Altogether. And I think, I think we need to have a serious discussion with some HOAs that surround, have hounds that surround this golf course, who bought golf course lots, about the subject as well. Because if all of a sudden that just became a public park in somebody's backyard, there's going to be some people that are going to be a little unhappy. There's a lot of people that are going to be unhappy, actually.
True.
So I think this is a valid step to move forward, see what's out there, see if anybody wants to run it, continue to run it as a golf course. We have other legal hurdles and obligations. If it ceases to be a golf course, based on the way the land was deeded, there's a deed restriction on this, that it should remain a golf course. So it's not open for development, it's all in a floodplain, we know that. So I think this is a good step. It's probably going to be a multi-step deal here. If we find an operator, great. I would support a qualified operator continuing to maintain a golf course there. If we can't find anybody, well, we're going to start that discussion you just started, or finish it, I should say.
And I would just say, Councilmember Tabor and Mayor, the staff is going to put in our own proposal on what it would take the city to run it. I doubt we'll be the, well, I'm sure we won't be the cheapest, you know, because we bear-
But we would be the best.
There you go. And if you, and if you want to judge it that way, I'm more than welcome open to that.
Well, you know-
I'm kidding.
Then you, you'll see exactly what it's going to cost the taxpayers of the city to operate a golf course.
Mr. Mayor, before, let's say we go through these 23, and no one comes back and wants to operate it, and our bid is too high as a city to operate it, there could be some other possibilities, and I have some that I would come out with at that point, but they will still keep it as a park, so.
Yeah, it's going to be open green space.
Yeah.
Regardless, and we'd welcome those ideas, but I think all of this is a little premature this evening. And we do have a Parks Committee that I'd like to have take a look at it, too. It's comprised of many of us, staff, and many people from the public. Someone, I would encourage some homeowners around that area to also attend those meetings as well, so. So we had a motion by Troy, and a second by-
C.R.?
Yes.
Further discussion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 15, Policies and Guidelines Handbook.
Mr. Mayor and Council, per direction from our city attorney, Chastity Page, your benefits and communication specialist is adding another area of specialty to her tool belt, ADA. So we have done some research, and she's spent extensive time looking into what policies would be necessary to make us compliant with federal guidelines on ADA, making our facilities compliant, making sure that all of our parks, all of our golf courses, everything meets the necessary requirements to be accessible. That even includes things like allowing sound systems in this meeting, the website to make sure that it's reader-friendly and things like that. So before you tonight is kind of a first step in a two-step process. We are still in the process of going through an inventory, and the last things to be reviewed are ironically the golf course and 13th Street Park. And so one of our inspectors, DJ Glassburn, who's very up to date on all of the ADA requirements, is checking those as he gets time, and he expects that here in the next month he'll be finished with that inventory. That will then go into a transition plan. The main process for ADA compliance is that you need to show what needs improved, and that you have a plan to do so, that you're acknowledging that you're going to make those improvements, not that once they're all discovered, they have to be done, you know, right away in the next 30 days or anything like that. Chastity came here tonight, so if you have any questions, I'm sure she'd be delighted to answer them, or I would take questions as well.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Troy.
Make a motion to approve and adopt the resolution seeking the addition of an ADA policy to Chapter 1 of the City of Andover's Policies and Guidelines Handbook as presented.
Second.
Motion by Troy, and a second by Caroline, to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Guess now would be appropriate time for executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to recess into executive session for consultation with the city attorney pursuant to KSA 754319B, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. The session is to include the governing body, city administrator, assistant city administrator, and the city attorney. The open meeting will resume in 15 minutes.
Director of Public Works?
No.
No?
Well, I'm here.
That was a motion, is there a second? Second. All right, we have a motion by C.R., and a second by Greg, to go on to executive session with consultation with the city attorney pursuant to KSA 754319B, excuse me. Which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, the session should include the governing body, the city administrator, the assistant city administrator, and the city attorney for approximately 15 minutes. Further discussion.
Just that our material does include the Director of Public Works, so-
The Director of Public Works was not in the original motion or the second.
I know, but I mean-
On purpose.
Purposely.
Okay, so, all right, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't-
His feelings aren't hurt.
Further discussion.
That was the intent.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Okay, Council, can I get a motion to come out of the executive session?
Someone? Second?
Motion by Greg, second by CR to come out of executive session. Further discussion. In favor say aye?
Aye.
And you opposed? Motion carries. I think we're down to member items. Caroline, would you like to start us off?
Yes, I'm, earlier in, uh, meeting, we had, um, uh, an item that we, I don't know whether we had a resolution, was probably a resolution. Anyway, it was one hundred and fifty-ninth street project from Central to fifty-four. As far as the project on one hundred and fifty-ninth street that is starting, well, I don't know if it even starts at Central, maybe it does, I guess it does, go all the way from Central, um, to the bridge. What, what's our expectation of when that will complete?
That project has a lot of moving pieces to it. What you see out there today is the waterline relocation for the city of Wichita. That waterline project should be finished up within a month or so. And at the same time, any day now, you'll see even more activity out there as the contractor starts the sewer project, the interceptor to go up to the Metal Arc Elementary School. That sewer project is not projected to be completed until maybe the first of November. The, the road and bridge project bids the end of September.
Okay.
So the first activity for that project is to demolish the old KTA bridge. So I would expect that bridge to be closed maybe sometime in November, and be closed at least six months, probably closer to eight.
Everybody, I think there's maybe only one subdivision housing that could not get out of their housing without getting on one hundred and fifty-ninth street. Everybody else, like in my division, or, uh, the one across the street even, there are other ways that they could get out. So at some point, is everybody, would we block off those into those streets or give people warning that you-
We will always have-
Sharing this is because I lived there, I felt like a fool. I pull up and I, and I even knew that this project was gonna happen, but, you know, I saw, anyway, I turned right to get onto the turnpike, I went, and all of a sudden I'm like, oh my gosh, I'm not supposed to be on this street. So I'm looking around thinking, do I turn around? I'm like, this is stupid, I just had to finish till I could get to Thirteenth Street. But, so somehow, I think maybe I wasn't warned well enough, and I maybe should've known better, but I'm just kinda wondering-
There are no right turn signs there, but they're pretty easy to miss. It's a standard issue.
Well, 'cause I think when I actually turned right, I saw the sign, but I'd already made my right turn.
Yes, and there's one out in front of you that probably gets obscured.
Thinking about looking at, because, yeah.
But that, that condition is gonna exist pretty much for the next year or two.
Well, I think those of us that live in there, I mean, I will never go out that way again. I'll just know, okay, I'm not going out that way, but-
We'll always have one-way traffic.
One-way, but you don't necessarily know which way it's going to be.
Even over to Mallard's Bridge?
One-way south from Terradyne Street. Everything will go south from the bridge.
All right, well, thank you, I was just curious, so it's-
We have a toll booth down the way.
But in reality, we could be talking how many, two years, you think, or as many as-
No, no, we should be finished by the end of construction next year.
Okay.
But the, the, all the pieces kinda have to fall in place. The utilities have to be done, the bridge has to be replaced, and then get into the paving project.
But when we get done, it's all gonna be like the beautiful side that's north of the bridge right now.
Yes.
I guess it's three-lane at least.
Right, and we'll, we'll add that bike pad component all the way up to Thirteenth Street, so we have a complete network around that, that square mile.
And when we have that bike pad, bridge-wise, it's just an extension of the bridge, it'll be-
Yes.
Get down one hundred and twenty-seven?
It'll, it'll have barriers and fences and the whole.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Troy?
Couple quick questions. One would be, do we have any numbers from the attendance from this last concert?
We sold just, um, over fourteen hundred tickets, and I believe we had seventy percent check-in, so that's significantly higher than the last two shows. Um, so our best guess is twelve to thirteen hundred by the time you put kids five and under in there, too.
Okay. Cool. Um, next question would be, um, we were, I thought we were looking at maybe putting a frisbee golf course in Central Park? Was that something that we had discussed looking at, maybe three months ago?
No, we, we had it in the budget.
This year, and I kinda think we're waiting to see what happens in the future with future parkland and- We sold just over fourteen hundred tickets, and I believe we had seventy percent check-in, so that's significantly higher than the last two shows. So our best guess is twelve to thirteen hundred by the time you put kids five and under in there, too.
Okay. Next question would be, we were, I thought we were looking at maybe putting a frisbee golf course in Central Park? Was that something that we had discussed looking at, maybe three months ago?
No, we, we had it in the budget.
This year, and I kinda think we're waiting to see what happens in the future with future park land and purchase, and how Yorktown all turns out and what that all looks like. I'd, you know, I certainly would defer to Councilmember Warrington, because he's kinda been in this discussion.
The area that was kinda projected was starting from where Yorktown Road is, where it's going to go all the way down to the west side, into the wooded area, and where it opens up into the back. And now Yorktown Road is obviously going there, so that kinda changes that. And so there's some areas down, and some potential land on the south side of the land to the east that we're looking at, that's a good possibility. And also, if something doesn't come in with the twenty-three different items on the golf course, then that's another possibility, too.
Oh, gotcha, okay. I've played Augusta a few times, it's pretty fun, I must say, but I don't like driving to Augusta, I'd rather do it here.
Yeah, yeah, El Dorado has a good course as well, that's knowledge. But there's, there's a few other ones in Wichita that are really old. And I think we, with ours going in, will be the newest one. And we're gonna get a lot of people that will come visiting or...
Very cool. Last few things, dealing with WAMPO today, we had a WAMPO meeting, and we looked at a prioritization list of the types of projects that might be worked on or looked at over the next few years for additional projects. Number one was North Junction, number two was 235 and Kellogg, and number three was the East Kellogg from ninety-six to Anniver Road. So out of the twenty-three entities that were there to vote, number three in the whole list was what we've, we've already forecasted being a big problem at one hundred forty-third Street in the future, so I think that's a big deal, that WAMPO's looking at that. Also, we approved the amendment for Anniver Road in front of Anniver High School. It's all on our, we're paying for it all anyway, but it is something that goes through WAMPO and it's voted on, it was voted easily today. That's it.
Were you gonna say something?
A little follow-up on that prioritization of the region's needs. KDOT is holding local consult meetings around the state to talk to stakeholders about what their needs are for the future, possibly another highway bill. The Wichita session is on August twenty-seventh. We've been working with the Wichita Chamber to have a regional presentation to that panel. We, we think that having a, a regional prioritization of needs speaks a lot louder than each of the cities, each of the entities asking on their own.
Yeah, that was, that was brought up today with the Wichita Chamber being a big lobbying arm for this, for this region, way outside of WAMPO's region even. And since you brought up KDOT, the, one of the KDOT engineers is on the board, too, and he actually mentioned that this should be number two, not number one, it should be ahead of the 235 Kellogg, in his opinion, which coming from a KDOT engineer, I think's a pretty big opinion, so that was neat, too.
So, you are?
I miss those WAMPO days.
I bet.
Other than that, I have no comments, no comments.
Well, chief, let's, let's see this video.
Well, if you give me, let me give me a second. If the council will remember, last year, after a couple tragic incidents around the country involving children at school bus stops, our department stepped up our efforts in school bu- bus stop sign violations. We started an educational piece, we put a lot of information out on our Facebook page, and we developed a flyer that went out to almost five thousand homes. We sent it out through the school districts, we developed posters with the help of the street parks department, and, and we put them in a lot of the major buildings around town, trying to get the word out. And then we went to enforcement, and we wrote about a hundred citations last school year compared to about nine the year before. So we really stepped up our efforts. Well, school's getting ready to start Thursday, and we wanna remind everyone to slow down for our school zones, and we wanna get the message out again, because we will be out in, looking for the violations on the school bus stop signs. And a part of that, we developed a video this summer, S. Earl Braxton Hill is the one that worked on this a lot, and we're rolling it out tomorrow morning, so I thought I'd give you a sneak preview of it.
Do we get popcorn?
It's only three minutes long.
Oh, okay, I can make it.
That'll be going out tomorrow, first thing tomorrow morning.
I noticed that was one of your hottest areas, and I see that one quite often, which is south of Kellogg. And which that is a four-lane divided highway with turn signals in the middle. And that, that is that one school bus that stops at that one location all the time. Is there any way that school bus can stop somewhere else?
I was just told about that earlier.
It's almost happening there all the time.
Where, if it's a divided highway with a raised median, you don't have to stop, the oncoming traffic doesn't have to stop. That part, that stops in an area where the median stops. So we're gonna, I was gonna get with the school district tomorrow and talk to them about that.
Now, where will people see this video? I mean, do they have to be on the Facebook or the website or...
We're, we're gonna put it on our Facebook, the cities, the Channel Seven, the school district is putting it out in theirs. So we're gonna get it around a lot. We'll probably even be, I think I've shared with you before, Captain Buchanan and I are sitting on a statewide advisory board, working on some new legislation, and we'll probably share it with that group also.
Yeah, it would be great if this kinda thing could get on just television ads. And maybe with enough departments, I mean, this is true all over, the state needed, and I would just love to see some of that, really where people are gonna really see it.
Yesterday and today, Channel Twelve was, was running a newscast about school zones, and they had a lot of the same information on the news and trying to ramp up people's knowledge of what's legal.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Even, maybe the schools have already thought of this, but if not, maybe a suggestion of any time they have a parent, you know, meet the parents are coming in, large group, this is very short little video, it'd be a good thing to share there.
That's tonight.
We'll be sharing it with them.
Okay, staff have anything else?
Wanted to remind everyone that our sports facility advisory group is gonna be in town starting tomorrow, the next couple of days. I believe we have lunch scheduled with you two, is that correct, Ms. McCollum?
It's not tomorrow, though, right? It's Thursday.
Thursday, okay, sorry, I looked at that wrong. And then they'll be meeting with a committee at six, six-thirty, is that correct, at the, on Thursday?
On Thursday as well, yes.
We're meeting with some coaches tomorrow, so that'll be taking up a lot of time. And did everybody get the notice from the chamber about the senate candidate who's gonna be here Friday, I believe, is that...
No.
His name is Dave Lindstrom, I, I...
Senate candidate for what?
For the United States Senate, yeah.
Who is it?
A guy named Dave Lindstrom, he's a former Kansas City chief.
And he lives here?
No, he's just, he just wanted to meet...
I think he's a lawyer.
Is he?
Why would we vote for a woman?
And I can't, I can't remember, I mean...
No, it's the statewide, right?
Noon at the Hereford House. No, federal, federal, yeah, yeah. He's running for Pat Roberts' spot, twenty-twenty, yeah. Yeah, the Hereford House, noon, thank you.
When is that?
Friday.
Friday, when? Noon? Yeah, I'll be around. Anything else? All right, let's get out of here.
Second.
Question by Troy, second by Caroline, further discussion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.